New Year. Lord, heavy hearts today for the young man, Damar Hamlin. The Buffalo Bills just ask you to continue to touch this young man, that we can heal him somehow, Lord, that he can regain the life that was in him. Lord, just help him as he struggles today. Help his family, give him comfort, and just put your guiding hands on him, Lord, today, as a whole country has come together to pray for this young man. Lord, just thank you for this commission. Thank you for this body of work that they do. Thank you for the way we work together. Lord, just ask you to be with us today to make decisions that's in the best interest of the entire Montgomery County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our attendees today will be Kendall Anderson and our grants administrator Regina Walker. The items to be considered during the formal session is a resolution to expand the permissible uses of previously obligated ARPA funds, consider a board member appointment to the Montgomery City County Personnel Board. Consider a board member appointment to the Montgomery City County Personnel Board. Consider 2022 SCAP grant application. Consider contract agreement for the ADM grant awarded to Parks and Recreation to improve playground safety. Consider fiscal year 2022 County Rebuild Alabama Annual Report. Consider a lease agreement with Xerox Corporation for multi-function copiers. Consider Amendment Number Three to a contract with diversified companies to extend the contract until May 1, 2023. Consider an addendum to the WOW Business Customer Agreement to extend the agreement on a month-to-month basis until July 2023. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Consider a bid award to Martin Environmental Services for collection and disposal of refuse services. Consider a bid award to Bond Construction LLC for re-roofing of Annex III. Consider a bid award to Centus Corporation Number Two to provide uniform rental service. Consider a bid award to telecommunications firm LLC DBA Citronet for a private data network for the Probate Revenue West Satellite Office. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for three corrections officer trainees, two corrections officer sergeants, and two correction officers corporals. Consider a position fill request for the youth detention facility for a juvenile detention officer. Consider a position fill request for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff sergeant. Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for a customer service clerk. Consider travel training requests for the county commission, finance, recreation sheriff, and the juvenile court. That's all our items. First, we will hear from Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson regarding item number one.
Good morning. We did receive a bid for the HVAC chiller and cooling tower replacement at the courthouse in the jail. That bid did come in at, as you see in your packet, nine million, over, a little over nine million dollars. Because there was only one bid received, it can, there can be some parts that can be negotiated and what we call value engineered. PH and J is going to work with the bidder to value engineer this project to get, see what costs can come down. So what we're recommending at this time is that, at our next meeting, come back with those costs with you and with preparation to proceed with that bid.
What does that involve, value engineering?
LaGarrett is here with PH and J. He could probably better explain than I can.
What does it involve?
If you would go to the microphone, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
With value engineers, just getting with the different engineers and seeing the different costs that could be associated with different things and what you can look at to remove or go back and forth on.
It cannot change the scope of the work, but there might be, the contractor may have ways to accomplish it.
For a cheaper price.
Okay, but the same, the work that needs to be done is going to be done.
Exactly.
I mean, that's a huge number there.
Same scope.
You know, I don't think, what did we anticipate this? I don't think we anticipated the cost at this point.
What about a million over?
More than that.
A million over?
It was over seven and a half million. So it is.
It is well over. So y'all gotta do a lot of value engineering. Good luck.
Be next agenda.
All right.
This is one, too, Florence. This is one that we can't, you know, I just saw with the Prattville, city council had some bids come in for the stadium, and they have put that on hold. But this is something that we really cannot put on hold. This is something that has to be done, so.
Correct. The second item is Amendment Number Three with Eagle Cleaning Service to extend the contract until June 30, 2023. Can that go on the next agenda?
Any questions? Next agenda.
Item number three is Amendment Number Three to Montgomery Armored Car Service to extend the contract until March 31, 2023.
Florence, on these that we're extending, what's the reason why we're extending these?
On the janitorial service, we want to look at some different ways to bid that, to try to attract more bidders, possibly looking at, for example, bidding the satellite offices separately, that sort of thing. It's something that we hope we can work with our minority affair, minority business consultant. And so this would just give us a little time to rework that bid.
Okay.
The armored car bid was extended. Terry, what was it? There was a bid that was delivered on time, but was not, it was delivered to the wrong office, not any fault of the bidder, so we're just going to rebid that. Regina. Regina has a general information item.
Good morning and Happy New Year. What you have in front of you is a grant opportunity notice of intent. What we're trying to do is for entities that, most of the entities under the county commission, utilize the county's EIN number. So for any grant application that they intend to pursue, where the county will serve as the fiscal agent, we would just like to know about it ahead of time so we can help make sure that we have the capacity to help manage that grant and just be generally aware of the grants that we have out there. So this is a kind of first step in just gathering that information and sitting down with them and knowing kind of what we're doing. We may even discover some opportunities to collaborate because, you know, entities may not always engage with each other. So we're just trying to put a first step process in place.
Yeah, I fully support this. That really all need to, you need to be aware of every grant, regardless if it's the DA or whoever it is, probate, whoever it is, and these come through your office.
Yes, sir.
I would support that.
Thank you.
My goodness. So being, our last meeting was December the 20th, and not a lot happened between December the 20th and January the 3rd. That is all we have on the information session. Now, we can discuss some other things if a fellow commissioners want to discuss them. We can also have, if anybody is here to speak at the 10 o'clock meeting, if you would like to come forward now, we'd be glad to entertain you now if anybody wants to do that. You always have the option to wait. Anybody's name on the list, Teresa?
Mr. Tim?
Yes, sir.
I would like to know the status, the claim status for the Flatwood Community Center, the damages and so forth, and just where we are with that.
Yes, I was on my mind to.
Okay.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Melissa, our risk manager is the one handling that claim, and she can answer those questions.
Good morning. We are actually very close to generating the initial figures for the damages to, or actually, you know, an amount to replace the Flatwood Community Center. I have been in communication with the insurance adjuster who is out of Atlanta, and he actually sent the initial estimate over this holiday weekend. So I've not had an opportunity to look through that in detail. But the initial figure that they have proposed is in the neighborhood of $450,000.
Is that anywhere, well, certainly there's nowhere near the replacement.
I'm sorry?
There's nowhere near the replacement cost, I don't suppose.
Yes, sir.
It is.
Yes, sir. As like kind and quality, yes, sir. That's what insurance pays for. Either like to replace it to like kind or quality that is available in current times. Obviously, it was an older building, so certain building materials are obsolete in this current market. But yes, sir, that is the initial evaluation. Now, obviously, that is not what we refer to as a settlement. As we start to get bids in, then that number will fluctuate, but that is the initial figure.
$450,000?
Yes, sir.
So I'm curious, have to learn a little bit about.
To learn about how this works, you said as we get bids in. So we, as the county, go ahead and put this out to contractors with our specs, which are comparable to what was there.
Yes.
And, and so we've already begun that process of, of at least getting our request organized?
I'm not aware that we have started that process. That would not come out of risk management.
Okay.
That would come through the normal bid process.
We have not taken any steps in that direction.
Okay. So then, once we do that and put it out there and then start hearing back from contractors, then there's a negotiation point with, on your end?
Yes.
With the insurance?
Yes.
So this is a lengthy process?
It will be. This is a marathon, not a sprint, and it is always like that when it comes to insurance. And that's why they give us two years from the time of the incident because we have to generate bids, we have to get the contractor, you know, we have to find and replace all these items.
If, unless we were to say, just give us the $450,000. Is that, I mean, is that how it works?
If.
If we want to negotiate, we have to.
It doesn't work that way.
Well, yeah, let me, let me talk to Melissa. If, if, if we have, so, so that's what they floated as this is probably going to be a ballpark, but they won't do, the insurance side won't do anything until we have a bid from a contractor.
They, they will agree to issue us an initial amount or in advance that we can use to start this, this process. But it is our responsibility, since we own the building, and it is our procedure through the bid process, to get the contractor to finalize any bids and to do that work, and then go back to the insurance company for additional reimbursements if warranted.
That's the way it usually work. You get a check?
Yes, sir.
For what it's worth now?
Yes.
If it's a replacement policy, you get it replaced, and the insurance company pays the difference.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, that's the way, that's the way it works. Ain't a whole lot of negotiating. I mean, you, you, now, if we're going to get something different than what we had, yeah.
Right.
You know, you're going to have to pay something out of your pocket. But if we have a replacement policy, they'll pay, they'll pay your initial sum. You said it's $450,000, and then you get it replaced, and it costs you $500,000, then you get a check for the difference.
Yes. Now, we also have, have to also take into account, there is a $100,000 deductible.
Well, yeah.
That would, yes, that would come off that.
That first check will be less to deduct.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And let's make sure we stay on this because we have 20 months now to complete construction.
Yes. And, and, I mean, then we are ready to get that, I mean, we're coming down to the wire where we're ready to get that initial check. So as I have advised Florence and Kendall in recent days, you know, go, we can go ahead and, you know, decide what that bid process is, specs, et cetera, et cetera. You can go ahead and get started on it.
Well, you know, in order to move forward, we'll have to have an architect to draw construction documents, go through that process, hire an architect, then it can go out for bid. So we need some direction.
How soon can we get started on that? I hope that we plan to replace the center and not just accept the, the check as part of the general fund budget. We are planning to replace the center. I trust that each commissioner here would certainly support that. And so I'd like to go ahead and get started with the bid process as soon as possible.
I think she just asked for some directions. I mean, we're going to have to get with her outside of this meeting to get with directions.
That was just a general statement. I appreciate it, Commissioner Harris.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think anybody, I hate to see this discussion go in that direction. You know, everybody is, I think, on the same page with regards to doing what needs to be done in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have any reason to imply that we wouldn't want to do the right thing here and rebuild? As opposed to cashing the check?
Commissioner Harris, yes, that advised us not to go in that direction, so I think I'll adhere to that.
Good, good, good advice.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In the past, we've supported the Alpha for Alpha Fraternity's annual Martin Luther King Day celebration, I think, with the county table. I saw it with somebody here.
Yeah, I think I did.
Was that enough for a table? I don't think so.
No, this, I did 500 for my, today, I think it's on there today.
Yeah.
I did 500 for a bunch of kids, students to be able to.
Teresa, can you look it up and see what, what we usually do? If we did it from joint, or was it individual?
It was joint, Commissioner Harris.
Alpha for Alpha Martin Luther King Day celebration.
It's always on a Saturday morning at the Renaissance. Is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been to it.
It's $2,500.
Yeah, you did send something.
You did. I'm looking at the email, Teresa. 2019, it was joint, $2,500. 2020, infrastructure, $2,500, and 2021, $2,500 from joint slash infrastructure.
I think we ought to do that, Doug, and you can.
Yeah, we got $1,137 in joint infrastructure left balance, so the rest would have to be done by commissioners.
Or you can come out on the come.
Well, if it's in January, I would assume that they need it now.
Yeah.
I think they've waited in the, I think they've waited in the past.
They'll take it when it gets there.
Yeah. Well, we can, again, we can do a 2,500 and save my 500. I'm not going to argue that for sure.
I'd say 2,500 from joint, and then, then when it comes in, we can pay it.
Okay. And that will provide us, I know, I did 500 for a table for some students to be able to attend because I'm going to be at Leadership Alabama. I'll be out of town that day, but I did a table.
It'll be for the employees anyway.
Yeah, exactly. So can you handle that, Florence?
So we will make a note to include that when we receive additional funding. Is that what you're?
Yeah. And just leave my 500 on there as it is. I've already promised these kids on there. So this will be 2,500 addition from joint in addition to what I did for the students. So this will provide a table. I don't know if it's eight or 10 at the table. I don't know. But we just need to make sure, because we don't meet again till after, because it's on the 14th, so we won't meet again. So make sure we have people.
Tickets will be for the employees.
Commissioner, can you handle getting a table set up and all that?
Me?
Yes, sir. Just make sure, whoever we need to contact, who, somebody needs to contact.
Isaiah.
Isaiah's got it, okay.
Thank you. I'll get it.
Yeah, just want to make sure we have people in the seats.
I don't deal too well with them office.
Or, or two, or eight, eight o'clock on Saturday morning either. You don't deal well with that either, do you? Is there anything else, any entertainment or anything for the next 30 minutes?
Go ahead and sing, Doug.
Well.
No, 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 I take that back.
That would cost you a lot more.
I take that back. That's what I need.
Sheriff, Rodney, anything you got on your heart? Lamar?
Doug.
Hey, Happy New Year to y'all. Good to see everybody. Well, since you brought it up, I know me and Personnel Department been talking about some salaries increases in the jail. Right now, we're starting them off at 35, and we can't get nobody. We're 80 people short. I had six people to retire. They've been there 30 years on the 1st of January. So we need to hurry up and fill that void. And the only way we're going to be able to do it is to be able to raise our salaries. I've been saying that for the longest, but the counties that have higher salaries don't have openings. The counties that have these salaries like ours got plenty of openings. So we need to look at that, and we need to at least try to address some of those issues. We have people leaving us going to other counties. No. So we really need to pay closer attention to that. I know they got a proposal out, and I've been working with Cheryl and Florence. So hopefully, the next meeting, we'll be able to have something before you all. But we really need to look at that because it's really cutting us very, very thin. Any questions?
I was just wondering, Sheriff, in terms of the wages, are we just going into, with all due respect, getting a wage war, and we back and forth, back and forth with these different entities?
You can call it a wage war. You can call it what you want to call it. I can call it survival. When Walmart pays more than what we pay, that's a problem. When they can go to Crystals and get what we pay, that's a problem. So you can call it a wage war, or you can call it taking care of your employees. Because my main goal is to take care of our employees so that we got the best. If you've got people staying here 30 years, I got deputies been here 42 years because they like their job. They like what they do. They've been promoted up. But when you get newer people, this new breed of people out here right now, it's all about the dollar bill. And if you can't see that from what's going on in society today, there's something wrong with you all, not me, because I can see it.
Well, I, I know that money supposedly, you know, answers all things, so that's according to the Bible. But there are also people who say it's, a lot of time, it's morale, it's the workplace, it's the lack of support. And so it goes beyond just salary. So I'm just wondering how much of that is related to just workplaces of the environment and so forth?
Well, I invite you to go over to the jail and be in the jail every single day with people kicking on the door, people throwing urine on you, people cussing you out every single day, and the problems and the complaints that you get every single day. Then you tell me?
Yes.
What kind of work environment is. See, there's more to this job. When you work over there, you're on a 12-hour shift and you're there three days a week, but then you got people doing mandatory overtime because we're 80 people short, and then you got to work over there for a whole week without a day off, and you dealing with the same problems. Yeah, your morale would be a problem.
And that's exactly what I've heard. So I'm just wondering, how do, how do you negate that? You know, the, that environment where people are cussing and throwing stuff at you?
I just said that. I just told you that.
Does the money, does money really compensate for that?
Money does everything. You sit right here and talk about a community center, which we dare need. We need it bad. But the problem is, he just gave you, they gave you a price of what you're going to get. You know it's going to cost you more. Everything in life costs more. And what we're trying to deal with now to do replacement employees costs you more. So just don't talk about what we're going to do everywhere else, but we're not trying to do it on the salary side as well.
I think we've addressed that before as well, the salaries. Who makes Sarisette compatible with Walmart in your department? I'm really.
Well, I got clerks over in my jail that start off at 27, $27,000. Do I need to keep going? Well, see, what I'm telling you, let's take a closer look at what we paying our salary, our employees, and look at what we need to do to fix the problem. We can't compare what they do over in my jail with what they do in Elmore and what they do in Bullock. We got a hospital, we got everything in that jail that they have on the street, and we take pride in it, you know? So you got to look at what we have to offer as compared to what other counties have to offer. They don't have nothing that we have to offer. We find ourselves holding their inmates when they get very bad sick because they can't afford to send them to the hospital and leave them in the hospital for weeks and weeks. They'll go broke, bankrupt. So we got to look at what we're doing right. What we're doing right is we got a good group of employees over there, and it's going to take you all to look at that, and you all to come in there and see what we're dealing with, and let's help correct that problem. And yeah, you could say all you want to say about salaries. When you get 80 people short and you need those people, we need those people. And you could throw money at everything else in the world, but let's take care of home first.
Sheriff, you know, you and I met, what, last week, and I think we've come up with a pretty good plan, and we'll be fine tuning that a little bit and coming back and presenting it to the rest of the commission.
Yeah, and that's what I was just giving you all heads up.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you setting it up. You teeing it up, I know.
Well, you asked me to come down. I hope not.
Nobody else is coming down after that one, so.
Yeah, well, I'm going to go back uphill.
Hey, you can go back.
I do appreciate y'all. I thank everything y'all done this past year. I think we had a successful year. You look at what the county's been doing, you look at you all's outlook in the community is great. People love what you're doing. I just want us to continue to do what we do coming into this new year. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
You know, what, the, I think that this entire commission, while I know it is, we are concerned and we're dedicated to making sure that the employees for Montgomery County are, are paid, are properly paid and properly equipped to do the job that we expect them to do when it comes to our constituents in this county. Your department and IT are two departments that I'm aware of that needs to be looked at, and I'll be the first to admit that, need to be looked at in terms of how we compensate those employees in those areas. And I think that that study's on the way. So, you know, and overall, as a county, there are things that we're looking at and things that we're trying to do to make sure that we are competitive in salaries and to make sure that our people really, really are properly paid and equipped. Because the last thing we want is unhappy employees. People have to on the job because it reflects on our constituency, and we get, we get that word back. We want top-notch employees, so we want to make sure that they're properly paid.
Well, I thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, I think, and I don't, you know, I know it's a difficult job. The first, first job I had, I worked, I went to work for one of the toughest sheriffs Montgomery County's ever had, Maxim Butler. And he stuck me up there in that jail. I couldn't wait to get out of that jail. The worst job you can have is, is turning that key up there because they do everything to you and at you. So, you know, it's a tough job.
Yeah.
You know, you need to, there need to be a system in place to rotate out of there every now and then. I can tell you that, but feel your pain, Sheriff.
And the other thing, too, is, you know, when we close the county for emergency reasons, the jail don't close.
No.
And law enforcement don't close.
No.
They still had to come in regardless of how hazard the roads are or the weather is. They still got to come in. So we understand that and appreciate that.
Well, and like I said, I just brought it to you all's attention. I know I got the support of you all. I ain't never, you never hear me out here bashing you, but I just like to make sure that we, we keep talking about it and it's still on our mind, you know, because I see the ripple effect of it. Because once we get down to a certain number of officers, then we're going to be looking at other counties to house inmates, and we don't want to do that.
Well, Sheriff, I did tell them, walking through the courthouse, when they asked for raises, I said, "Well, that's the sheriff's responsibility to come over here." So you've done a good job and raising your voice, I guess, helps it.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm here for my people. Thank y'all.
I do want to take this liberty this morning. Was going to do it at 10, but we got a little time. Tommy Gayen is retiring after 34-plus years as our county attorney. When Tommy came in, he instituted the self-insurance program that we currently use, and it saved us close to a quarter of a million dollars per year by doing that. Couple of other things Tommy did. Tommy, when he was appointed the attorney, he felt like it was important that we have an African-American co-attorney with him, and he was the one that went to the white Republican chairman, the white Republican. and he was the one that went to the white Republican chairman, the white Republican commission, and convinced them to hire Tyrone Means, and, you know, Tyrone served until his untimely death last year. Tommy's always been very good about treating all the commissioners with respect and working with all the department heads and all the county employees. Our first African-American judge here was a lot to do with Tommy Galyon. When Judge Hooper decided to retire, Tommy kind of led the charge with Judge Hooper to go see the governor to appoint the first African-American judge in Montgomery County. Now, if you can imagine back in those days, going to see Governor George Wallace to convince him to appoint a black judge, it took a lot of courage. But it was the right thing to do, and he was, Judge Price, without a doubt, was the right person for the job, but still took a lot of courage. So I wanted to ask Tommy if he wanted to say just a few words this morning. We appreciate him being here. He, retirement started January the first. He's got a wife at the beach. He's got numerous grandkids, and I don't know, he got great-grandkids yet? I don't know if he got a great-grand...
I will if I figure out how to cut this off.
Well, he's been thirty-four years in intern. Figured I'd turn the mic on.
I got it.
So, Tommy...
First of, first of all, I am not retiring. I, I, the thought of me sitting in a home with my wife telling me to go get milk and bread, I'd rather be chained to an eighteen-wheeler and drug down the street. That's just not me. And I'm about the same age as Dan down there in Elton. Judge Price is older than I am, and there are plenty of lawyers out there still working. I plan to work, and I'm going to work with the new in-house attorney to make sure that everything runs smoothly, and I've got Connie Walker with me, and I've got Louis Gillis, if we try cases, and we've got several pending. But the Judge Price thing, I will add a little humor to that. Perry Hooper, who was a Republican presiding circuit judge, decided his, right after he got elected, that he wanted to retire from, and, and get his retirement, and wanted to come with my firm, which I was honored. And I said, "Well, that's good." And he said, "Well, who should we get appointed?" And I said, "Let me think about it." So I went home, and I came back, I went down to his chambers and said, "Look, Montgomery needs a black judge, bad. We don't have one. It's a disgrace with the population like it is." And I thought I was going to get a negative response, he being a white Republican. It was the complete opposite. Perry Hooper was a very religious man, and he agreed one hundred percent. So I called George Wallace and said, "Perry Hooper's going to retire. We need to come talk to you about appointing the circuit judge." So Perry and I went up there, and I said, and he said, "Well, who, who do y'all want to appoint?" And I said, "Well, Judge Hooper and I want you to appoint Charlie Price. Isn't he a black?" And I said, "Yeah, unless he's whitewashed lately." And he said, "Well, how are your constituents going to think about that?" And I said, "We don't care. We want the right man in there." And he said, "How am I going to explain this?" I said, "Well, let me explain to you, Governor. I've known George Wallace since I was nine or ten years old." I said, "Either you appoint Charlie Price, or Judge Price." I mean, Judge Hooper is not retiring. So that kind of ended the meeting. Now, he did have several other prominent attorneys called. And, but anyway, it, it, you would have thought, when we told him that, that somebody had hit him over the head with a frying pan, but he gracefully did it, and we did that. And then Tyrone Means, who tragically died lately, has been working with me and my associate Connie Walker. And when I say this, I don't mean to be braggadocio, but we've never lost a case for Montgomery County. We've never had a commissioner even investigated or accused of violating the law. And I sit back in my first county commission meeting, if you believe this, they were redoing the old courthouse over here, was in a room that was, oh, maybe from here to there. I mean, you, it, it wouldn't seat but maybe three or four, five people. And then we graduated up to being able to use one of the courtrooms. Now, that was in nineteen eighty-six, and I have watched the county evolve. And, and I've been here my whole life. My father served as city attorney way back when. My father-in-law was, was mayor right after World War Two. I have seen this city grow, and I have seen racial tensions ease. I have seen blacks and whites, Republicans and Democrats, work together for the good of the people of Montgomery County. And I have watched it, and, and, and it's been such a great experience for me. And I've, and working with the county employees, with Donnie Mims before, well, actually, Dave Stockman, now, that was a tough task. Stockman was a retired colonel, and it was yes or no, sir, and marched to my feet or marched on out the door. And, and then Donnie Mims, and of course Florence has done an excellent job. And George came on as the engineer. We've had Tammy up there working with us. We've had the probate judge's office, the revenue commissioner. And it, it's just been wonderful, but I would be remiss in not saying that Montgomery County electing Sheriff Derek Cunningham was the best thing that has happened since I've been county attorney for thirty-four years. I think you can go out in the public, and they feel safe with Derek Cunningham. And I'm not going to search the city police department, but that's not my cup of tea, if you want to know the truth. But anyway, I will be here. I am not going to the grocery store and buy bread and milk. And I will work with the new in-house county attorney, which I will see that Montgomery has grown to the point that they needed in-house attorney to handle the everyday legal things that I did. But it has been an honor and a pleasure, and I don't want to emotionally break down, but Montgomery County has been a major, major part of my life for thirty-four years. Thank you all for allowing me to serve. Please sit down. I'm not running for anything.
Well, jokingly, I could say we stood up because you're leaving, you know? But I'm not going to say that. You know, the, the great thing about Tommy was, is anything ever came up, it probably already happened here in Montgomery County at some point. So so many times I'd ask him stuff. He said, "Well, back in nineteen ninety-one," I remember that coming up. And again, he's, I said retiring from the day-to-day, but he's still going to be legal counsel, still help us, still work with us, because you cannot replace that knowledge and that experience of what's happened here in Montgomery County.
Thank you, Doug. And if I start drooling, then don't even call me anymore.
Start drooling. That's why I moved you down here next to the door, so you could get out. Anybody got anything else before we take a recess? Well, there's your opportunity to talk with your commissioner if you want to speak one-on-one. We got about fifteen minutes, and we'll start properly at ten o'clock. See you then.